...work, I'll turn it over to Mr. Fairborn.
Thank you, sir. I'll turn it over to Mr. Kraus.
Thank you, Mr. Fairborn, Mr. Mayor, my team. Over the past, oh, we've been working on this on and off with various cities in Cass County, probably for about four years. One of the, one of the big challenges that we've had is there's a difference in, difference in fiscal years amongst the various cities. Well, this year, as we started working on it again, a couple of the cities whose fiscal year runs in April held projects over. So, we're all financially in sync with, with funding for the various street improvement projects. So, working with the city of Belton, Peculiar, and Pleasant Hill, we've, we've come to, come up with a set of specifications that will allow us to jointly bid, uh, street improvement projects and concrete work such as the mill and overlay, micro-surfacing, some of the cities do chip seal, curb and gutter, and then some of the cities will be, um, contracting their striping. The projects that would impact us are, are mill and overlay, which is part of our street preservation projects, the micro-surfacing, and curb and gutter replacement. Attached, we would, uh, attached is an agreement that kind of sets forth the terms and conditions for the bidding process. The city of Belton would be the lead agency, and then we would just, uh, so they would bid the project under their specifications which match ours. Uh, they are proposing to bid the project with an option of renewing, uh, one after, for an additional year after, uh, subject to good performance by the contractor. What we've talked about this year is because combined, there are several million dollars worth of work across all these projects. We're going to just bid the mill and overlay work as the, as kind of a guinea pig for the joint, joint bidding, just to make, kind of work the quirks out. I'd rather have one contract be a little quirky for us than having five. So, we're gonna take it one, one bite at a time. Uh, some of the advantages we see to this is there's an economy of scale, larger project Belton's. Belton's, uh, project value is pretty close to two-thirds, to almost three-quarters of what our dollar, dollar value is. So, there's some balance there. Pleasant Hill and, and Peculiar aren't, they don't, they're considerably less than, than what we've got as far as a dollar value. But we see some advantages due to the economy of scale, and with the multi-year contract, having a stable contract for two years helps us budget for the, for the following year. Some of the concerns are that the, there may be, and it's hard to quantify, is that we may be subsidizing some of the lower, some of the smaller cities in, through the bidding process, but you really can't, um, quantify that because we're pooling all of the, all of the quantities together. And we do, we do lose some control, although we agree with the SPACs, we, you know, we, we've worked with the, the timing of the bidding and all of that. We do lose some control, but it would still be under our, our inspections and all of that. Um, at this time, we're seeking, seeking direction whether or not council would, uh, consider placing the joint powers agreement on the next council meeting for consideration.
Questions of staff? Councilmember Kellogg?
Not so much questions, but comments. Um, I appreciate staffs going through the footwork of this and setting this up, and I think it's a very prudent way to go, one bite at a time. Uh, totally support that. As far as subsidizing, uh, I, I will give my colleagues, uh, a short, brief summary history of the, uh, subcommittee that I used to serve on the redistribution of the road and bridge sales tax, sir. Uh, uh, sales tax that we have here in Cass County, that I believe it's an eight cent sales tax in Cass County. But a few years back, uh, the county commissioners set out for the cities of Cass County to sit down a task force to see how to distribute those monies because the current, well, not the current commissioners that are on the Cass County Board, but the previous commissioners couldn't make up their mind or, uh, have any consistent, um, opinions as to how to distribute that. So, all these cities came together and, uh, came up with a compromise and a, um, agreement as to how those monies were distributed. And I, I will say that, that these, these cities that, that we're talking about, uh, working with, were very, very cooperative, very, very, uh, open to everything because there was a lot of animosity in the beginning, there was a lot of controversy about who was gonna get what share, and this and that, and everything else. So, you know, th- those cities have reached out to each of their neighbors, including us, in, in a compromising, uh, mode, and in good, good faith, and luckily and gratefully that the, uh, our, our current commissioners in Cass County are, uh, following through with the, uh, agreement that came out of those, uh, committee meetings. So, the, the concern that I would have had with this, and Mike's already spoken to it, is we have made our regulations and, and, and our requirements for like our pavements and stuff, a little more stren- a little more strenuous than what they were in the past. We, we, I, I can't remember, but we require a better quality cement. Mr. Stevens can talk about, and I know Mr. Crass can too, about the aggregate that's in it. Uh, I would worry about the other cities not having the, the standards that we have set forth, but you have said that those standards are there. So, I'm comfortable with that, so, but that's, that's the comments that I have.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr.?
Oh, Ms., Ms. Huber.
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions. One of them is Raymore is, I'm gonna know if there's any downsides, downside to this. Because Raymore ha- is the largest land-sized city in Cass County. And, uh, several years ago, they marked, did some sort of a study, and they sent out a list to us, and told us how many, um, miles each city had. And Raymore was one of the top ones, I think, outside of, after Lee's Summit and Independence, Raymore had more, um, uh, road miles than just about any other, uh, city of our size. And because of that, that means that we use a, a lot of this, uh, the asphalt and things. So, my question is, is there a downside to us? Because since we are the largest in Cass County, how would we be affected? Should we be the one that's, say, um, instead of Belton, that they are, uh, heading this up, since we've got the most to, to lose and the most to gain on this? Is there any reason why it has to be Belton? I guess I'm being parochial, but, uh, what about Raymore? Since we've got the most, shouldn't we be in charge?
Mr. Mayor, question for Mr. Crass. Um, Mr. Crass, how much money are we really talking about saving here, doing it this way rather than running independent?
It, it's hard to quantify, but I, I can tell you that the total, total dollars that we would be bidding out is almost double what our, what our current budget is. So, we, just based on the economy of scale, we would, we would see, we, we anticipate there would be some, some cost savings.
And, and there's kind of a follow-up statement on that, and needing that answer. You know, for me, the issue that I'm juggling is, what are we giving up versus what are we getting? Uh, one of the concerns that I have, and, and I appreciated the staff's reports because I see the benefits and the, and concerns equally. Um, first of all, you know, we have been very assertive about maintaining our uniform development code. And the concern is if Belton's gonna be the lead dog on this, what if we wanna make a change, but we're stuck running on their standards, then why bother making a change? And are we really, what are we getting out of this? Um, if we're getting a huge savings, that's fantastic, but the other concern I have is, for example, with the sidewalks that went in in War II, we had two different years of that. Well, we had two different contractors, and the quality difference was dramatic, and in fact, most of the road damage on Johnston Drive was caused by the second contractor and their equipment. And so, my concern is if we get into a four-city agreement with a contractor, even if there's good intention, and it's a, it was a good bid upfront, what if that contractor has problems? Now, we have four cities that will be negatively impacted versus one. So, I, I think there's, we've, we've got some pluses and minuses here to balance that, um, I'd like to see a little more information before we overly obligate ourselves, especially because we're one of the largest participants in this, we have a great deal to lose.
In, um, in looking in the future, perhaps if we were, um, involved in this agreement, do we have an, an opportunity to vet out the contractors, to make, uh, to find preferred contractors whose quality, um, would, would be of, of the level that we would expect here?
Uh, Belton uses a qualification-based selection process, or RFP process, similar to what, what we do. So, yes, contractor references do, do play a part in the selection process.
That brings up a question. What if, you know, and there has been some talk, but I don't think there's any that are on a, a-ball list as far as for us in Raymore, but what if there is a contractor that we absolutely, as the council says, we do not want to use them, for whatever reason in the, in the past that, that we have experienced problems? Uh, and the lead city was to, to pick that contractor, would we be forced to, to use that? That, that is a concern that I have right now.
The, the intent would be that we would bring back something, whether a resolution or a, a bill ratifying the contract award. So, you would, so you would have, have the ability to approve the, or ratify the award or the selection of the contractor. Item number nine under the contract, sir.
I'll just say real quick that I'm in favor of this. I think if it gives us a chance to save money, if basically it's gonna be the same thing that we would get if we bid it out alone, except that we would hopefully be able to save some money by working together with the, our neighboring cities. Um, I'm curious, Mr. Moorhead, what exactly are those questions that you feel like need to be answered? I would hate to put this off for some unanswered questions if we're not sure what those questions are.
Um, obviously, with this agreement, we're dealing with different types of work. Um, so, under section one, there's five different areas on there. I, I'm just curious from a historical standpoint, if we bid this, how much is the cost savings for these things? Um, so, that would be, that would be the primary questions. Um, if we did approve this, though, on a separate note, I would ask that at least it be considered, I don't see any language in here that allows us to revisit whether to renew this agreement or not. And I, I mean, if this is a perpetual agreement, I would, I would encourage us to at least say, this should be revisited among the four communities within, say, a two-year period to see if this is a, a good working relationship. And so, if we do implement it, if we find out we're starting down a bad path here, we can get out of it.
We'd certainly add that language, sir. And you had indicated a two-year period?
Uh, that was just a general recommendation, yes.
Mr. Mayor, are we buying a, um, striping piece of equipment? And then I notice it's in, listed in here. So, do we still need to buy one?
Uh, definitely. Um, thi- this is strictly for laying down new road. And obviously, when you're laying new road, if it is a road that's going to need to be striped, that is a component of the contract. Uh, but yet, the striping equipment is for roads that have been laid already.
The intention would be that there would be, uh, potentially five different contracts. If, if, as this moves forward, there would be five different contracts bid. What we, what we are doing this year is, is simply bidding out the mill, the mill and overlay proj- project. So, they would be individual contracts. What the cities are agreeing to is these are, this is the type of work that would be potentially bid out jointly and jointly awarded and jointly participated in.
In this agreement, um, how is, um, the priorities made for who gets to go first, what project gets to go forward? How is that determined among the cities?
I, yeah, I think it's, it's really up, as always, uh, we would look at it as up to the contractor to find the most effective and cost-effective way to pursue the work. I mean, certainly, there would be completion dates, you know, an end completion date by, by fall, but, um, it's really looking, the contractor looks at his manpower and how to best allocate his, his resources. So, what we would have is a, an end date, but it, and then we would have a, uh, pre-construction meeting where the contractor would, would lay out, lay out the schedule. But as far as priorities, I think we'd leave that up to the contractor.
And, and we run into that problem bidding independently as well, because they're laying out their priorities, but everybody has approximately the same end date. You have to finish your work by this date in the fall, and they would simply have to figure out a way to get to all of that. I'm kinda curious if this here is, y- using this as like a test model for other areas that, where we could possibly have a similar situation with, with other contracts we have as the city? Would, would this kind of be used as, uh, a test run for something like that, or is that, that the, the intent, or is that the thought, or has there been any thought given to that?
Couple of answers. Uh, we see this, this year as being a test run for this, it, just this, because we're only doing one of the five this year. Uh, just to kind of pilot it and make sure that it is going to work for us and that we can kind of run through all the bugs. Uh, it has been a longstanding council goal that we get to cooperative bidding procedures and cooperative bidding wherever possible for economies of scale and cost savings. Certainly, those are gonna be the two priorities that we look at when we examine this program, if we go, if the council wants us to go forward with it, is are we really seeing a cost savings when we look at this compared to previous years? And, and the only way to do that is to dive into the pool and, and let's see what we come back with on this, as long as we're being careful about it.
Would it be possible that this cooperative bidding could possibly keep small businesses from participating in the bidding process because they wouldn't have the capability of dealing with four municipalities at once to schedule within one year? Is that something that would limit the number of bids that we would get because only certain businesses could give us that bid?
Possibly, but the positive side of that is, even with the volume of work that we're bidding out, it, we would want one of the more experienced paving companies to come in, come in and do that. What we, what we've seen is, uh, over the years, as work has ebbed and flowed, we've seen parking lot contractors trying to expand into mainline paving, and it's, it's a different, it's a different technique, it's a different quality assurance, and so, really, um, we would want someone that can handle this volume of work doing the project.
I think I'm, I'm gonna support this in bringing it forward. I think if we can, um, realize some substantial savings and keep ourselves, um, at least unentangled or with an ability to, to pull out of it, should it go south, I think it's probably a pretty good thing.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor, are they, the, uh, one, the successful bidders, are they going to be big enough that they could handle two or three jobs at the same time? Because I could see where we have to put in, let's say, let's say sidewalks or curbs. And they can't do Raymoors because they're doing Beltons or Pleasant Hills or Peculiar's. That wouldn't sit well with the, my constituents, especially if they've waited two or three years for something. And so, we're talking about companies that would be big enough to handle dozens of jobs in the areas in. Am I correct?
That is correct. And, and on the backside of that, uh, if, if the company, if the companies are underperforming, if a company in one of these areas, and we proceeded with it, began to underperform, you have to remember, now there are four municipalities who are putting the hammer down on them rather than just us. In the case that we would go with something like this, and we were to enter into a cooperative agreement, would our staff be able to still monitor and inspect the work, or would that fall to the lead city of, of the, the negotiating team?
Thank you. No, each, each city is, is still responsible for contract administration. When I say Belton is the lead agency, they're, they're administering the, um, with our cooperation, preparing the plans, specifications of the bidding documents, bidding it, and doing the initial bid award. After that, it then turns over to the individual cities for the quality assurance and contract administration, payment approval, and all, all those things. So, they are, Belton being the lead bidding agency, they're just simply doing the upfront administration.
Kind of a hypothetical question, but what if a city can't pay the bill, and then the other cities that are part of that? What, i- i- in that hypothetical situation, what would happen?
That city would be in trouble, but because, but, and on their own. Because each city administrates its own contract. We would still be bringing a contract award to you all.
If, if I'm understanding this correctly, it would be similar to a network of doctors that agree to pay a certain price for a certain procedure, and they're all part of that network, and that particular office may bill differently, but the agreement with the city, with the, with the four, with the four groups is, here's what we're gonna pay for that particular service, and each city would be separate to do its own billing and everything like that. Correct?
Correct. Very, very similar to the, well, you all have signed some of these, the Mark cooperating contracts. This is, looks almost like one of those models.
Any questions or comments?
Staff will proceed with, uh, putting this on a future council agenda after we've had the opportunity to talk with, uh, the other agencies to see if we can get an out clause put in there. If we can't get the out clause put in, we'll come back to you with that information. Thank you.
All right, moving on to number two, intergovernmental agreement on Kentucky Road Study.
Call on Mr. Crass.
Thank you. Um, we anticipate that the Mid-America Regional Council, which administrates the federal funding for road improvements in the area, is going to be doing a call for projects in 2016. Uh, one of the projects that we think would, would score rather well is the reconstruction of Kentucky Road from 163rd Street to 58, 58 Highway. This would be another opportunity, they have to do a joint, uh, agreement with, with Belton. Um, there's a certain number of upfront tasks that need to be performed in advance of submitting an application. Uh, these include such things as preliminary design, some traffic studies, some other items that the application kind of scores, um, filling in the blanks that we think to, uh, to score well for the project. Our projects typically, when we've done them ourselves internally, score around thirty to thirty-two points. Funding starts at about fifty-nine. Uh, a lot of the information that we need to put in there, we, we just don't have, we just don't have available. There's, there's questions regarding, uh, air quality, travel times, other things that we think, really, what we need to do is teach to the test. I mean, we've gone through this a couple of times. We know what information we gather, need to gather to, to increase our scoring potential. And so, what we're looking for here as part of this next budget process, it, would council be open to, uh, doing a cooperative agreement with the city of Belton for some of this preliminary design work, up to and including, uh, preliminary design and identifying right-of-way needs for Kentucky Road?
Is, is Belton going to work with us on that? Because the last time we tried something like that, they weren't interested, and we were having to go alone. So, do, do we still have to go alone on this?
Um, the, the point of this is so that, uh, we're not going alone. Uh, the last ti- for those of you who weren't here, just a quick bit of historical context, uh, the last time that we did this, uh, we applied for a grant, and there was a handshake agreement between the public works departments. And then, uh, our public works department had taken it to the council. Uh, the, the dollar amounts involved were approximately two million for each of the cities, and going for a four-million-dollar federal grant. Uh, lo and behold, we got the grant, and, uh, all of a sudden, we were like the lead dog, and all the rest of the dogs are just gone. And so, Belton said that, uh, they didn't have the funding to do it at the time, they were invested in some other items, and we ended up turning four million dollars back to Mark, which they still remember. So, we don't wanna proceed doing anything unless we have Belton, you all's approval, and Belton signing on the dotted line, that they're at least interested in proceeding with each step, as Mr. Crass indicated, the first step being a study and traffic counts, et cetera.
Has Belton indicated that yet?
Uh, yeah. Yeah.
Mr. Fairborn, help me out here, because I thought when I first came on the council, I was told that there was a joint agreement between Raymore and Belton, that we would maintain 155th to 163rd, they would do 163rd down to 58. I- am I incorrect in that?
No, we, we have a, we have a maintenance agreement. As, as you said, we maintain from 155th Street to, uh, 163rd, and Belton maintains south of 163rd Street. The goal would be to have Kentucky Road reconstructed all the way to 155th Street, but given, given funding, um, we, we felt that the joint staffs, you know, the, from 163rd Street north to 155th, Kentucky Road's in fairly good shape. It's, it's, uh, fairly wide, pavement is in very good shape. South of 163rd Street, it's, it's really rough on both sides. And so, looking at breaking up the project to kind of fit available funding, we felt that the best segment to do first was from 58 Highway to 163rd Street.
Um, okay, so, I mean, this, again, this sounds to me like we took care of our half, somebody else didn't take care of theirs, and now we're gonna enter into agreement where we take over half of theirs. Uh, I mean, and, and I know I may be a little sarcastic here, so I'm gonna ask it in the form of a question. Is that what I'm interpreting? Is that correct?
I think that what we would say is, uh, Mike says that the pavement north of 163rd Street is in very good shape, but the goal of this project is, and very good shape is subject to some interpretation, the, uh, uh, the, the goal eventually is going to have to be that Kentucky Road gets reconstructed in its entirety, sir. It, it's just going to have to be done, and even though there's a maintenance agreement in place, uh, that, they could say, okay, our maintenance south of 163rd Street to 58 Highway is going to be exactly what you see now and no more for the life of that road, and we, one half of that road is technically ours.
Well, I'm, and, and I know I may, my earlier comments may have seemed a little sharp, but I, I, I'm actually in favor of this from the standpoint of, um, regardless of the point that I may have been inferring, we have residents that live along that road that need better roads. We've got businesses on that side, and we're trying to develop that North Galleria section, which is attached independent on that. So, regardless of the fact of whatever history has occurred, this is beneficial to Raymore. It is a part of Raymore, it helps Raymore. Um, you know, with all that being said, I'm actually reasonably in support of this.
Is this the only option that we have? I, I see in here where Mark is getting ready to do, uh, maybe some more projects on roads and give some funding. So, if Belton won't work with us, do we have a fallback, another place we can go? Another street that we might? I'd like to see us go out toward, um, uh, 291 and at least get out there toward Road, because we've got citizens on Ward Road that don't have that don't have very good roads. And that's in our city limits.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. What worries me about this, I'm in support of it. I agree with what Mr. Moorhead has said, you know. One of my questions would be, you know, and I'm sure this here, the traffic study would come through, is what are the traffic patterns north and south of 163rd? You know, I'm not sure how many neighborhoods. I know we've got Herald Estates there that use that southern part of that road every day, you know. But, you know, I use that road intermittently. When I know there's a traffic tie-up, you know, I'll swing down 155th and swing up Kentucky Road. So, you know, I mean, that is a road that many people do use, you know. Not as much as the neighbors there, but I would be curious about the traffic studies, you know, what they show north and south. The other thing that concerns me about this is, you know, and I know this is down the road, but, you know, I wish we knew a little bit more as far as where we're at with the realignment of Kentucky Road coming into the North Galleria. You know, because we're talking $4 million, you know, at one point, you know. If we do this, and we find out that, you know, two years later down the road that we're going to realign it, that's kind of, I don't want to say we just chucked away $4 million, but the intent is, is, you know, as far as our goals and our growth management, is to shut that down, you know, at the very south end of that road. So that is a concern of mine. So I'll let staff respond to those comments.
Well, the scope of the design would be to realign, would be to realign Kentucky Road as part of this, part of this design. And then we do have to, as you said, we've kind of mutually have to work with Belton to deal with how we handle Kentucky Road as at 58 Highway. With regards to the traffic study, one of the things that we're, that we would be looking at is not only traffic on Kentucky, but one of the things that we have a hard time quantifying, and that's why we'd like, we need some assistance from an outside consultant, is hopefully this would make Kentucky attractive to the commuters and offload traffic from the 58 interchange. And that's very difficult to quantify. Intuitively, you can say, yes, it would do that. But that's, part of the application process wants to see the numbers that back that up, and that's part of the, part of the study. So by offloading traffic, you're reducing idling time, you're reducing green emissions, those type of things, and so that all plays into their scoring system.
And I agree with that, and thank you for that. It also brings up another question. Do we know where, because there is a cooperative agreement between Belton and Grandview to improve 155th down to Kentucky Road, I believe, also. You know, so that would make that more attractive for a path into Raymore, especially for, you know, the ones that live on the, what I would assume, what I would think would be the far west side of town, you know. And even over into like Cumberland Hills and such like that, you know.
In addition to that, as far as traffic flow is concerned, east-west, they, there is an agreement to improve to Kentucky Road. And then sooner or later, the council staff feels is going to have to in some manner begin giving consideration to 163rd being placed through. Just as a pure traffic flow issue for the city. So if you start looking at people coming off of I-49 on 155th, wanting to get into Creekmore, and pushing 163rd Street through there so that they can either go north or south, even on Foxridge, you're going to be talking about a pretty large increase in traffic on the north side of that road.
As far as what, what would we expect, or what does staff expect that that road will look like if this is able to go through? Would it be a two-lane, north and south, each way? Or would it be a two-lane, one-way?
I think that's where I kind of indicated, we want to, we want to teach to the test. I think we'd want to design a segment that would maximize our, maximizing our scoring capabilities. That may mean council needs to just make some policy changes with regards to adopting Mark's complete street policy, which involves pedestrian, multimodal transportation, accommodating bikes, pedestrians, those type of things. It may be a two-lane facility with medians and controlled access. Really, I think we would bring the preliminary design forward. But I think what we really want to do is design this segment in a way that maximizes our points to capture the, you know, almost 75% of the construction costs of that roadway segment.
What we have there is not just a simple road that is half Belton and half Raymore. What you've got are three different streets that go into one. And that's going to take a lot of design work. And I'd like to see what they're planning before I would say I would approve something. Because that's going to be difficult. You're coming off of Kentucky Road right now. Then you do, what is it, on Dean or Clint, I think they call it, that goes into it. And then where we have, what was it, the tire people, that goes into it. So you've got three different roads going into one. And I'd like to know how we're going to handle that. Because are we going to shut down some of our roads in order to make just one there? How are we going to do this?
My comment is, I guess, similar to Councilmember Huback. I am not familiar enough with the project at 155 and I-49. Is there more going on there besides just the interchange? Or is it going to include a widening of 155 down to Kentucky? I approve of this, but personally, I'm not going to take a great road that goes to three or four small roads. Unless it's really going to, unless there's a huge backup on 58. I realize, hopefully, once we build part of it, it will attract the production of better roads that connect to that. But I'm just curious about that, that project, what information you could give me.
Well, there is a new interchange planned at 155th Street and 49. They are also going to be improving 155th Street to the west. And Belton and Grandview have a project which is currently funded that'll improve 155th Street to Kelly at a minimum, and hopefully it'll extend all the way to Kentucky.
Thank you. That's good news.
Other comments or questions?
Do we have a ballpark amount of what the upfront tasks are going to end up costing us?
I think we've, at staff level, we've kicked around an estimate of about $40,000, which would be about $20,000 for each city. But if we take that all the way to, I mean, that includes right-of-way and preliminary design. So that's roughly about 10%. That, with the studies and everything else, that's a, that's a pretty good, that's a pretty good number. That's a reasonable number for a $4 to $5 million construction project.
And do we get to write any of that back into the grant?
No.
All right. We'll go on to item number three, private parking lot maintenance.
I'll turn this over to Mr. Catterett to make the staff report, sir.
Thank you. Back in September of 2014, council held a work session where we had discussion on our property maintenance code and maintenance of private parking lots. It was a topic that was brought up by Councilmember Stevens. And the question, the general question being is whether we could look at improving our standards and our requirements for maintenance of parking lots, and perhaps even our process of enforcement of the code. At the work session, council directed staff to do a couple of things. One item which was done fairly quickly was to provide an opportunity on our request tracker website for a resident to initiate a complaint or a concern about a particular parking lot or area. If they, if they came across a problem area, they could identify it through our request tracker, and staff could go out and initiate the inspection. The second item that council asked staff to do was to research what other communities were doing, what other code provisions are out there. Staff took an extensive look at communities, specifically on the Missouri side, and quickly found out that the general language that we have in our code is the standard language that others have there. We could not find a good example of a community that has clearly defined our parking lot maintenance items. We went beyond the Kansas City area, looking at a few other communities in Missouri. Found a few examples, little bits and pieces. So what we have done is taken those nuggets, if you would, what a few items that we thought were valuable, and drafted a proposed ordinance to amend our current code language. What we have done is proposing to eliminate our current requirements within the property maintenance code. It kind of broke out the proposed language in two sections. One would deal specifically with walkways, sidewalks, paths, et cetera. The second area of the code would deal specifically with parking lots, parking spaces, and access aisles. In looking at our proposed language, we wanted to do a quick inventory analysis, if you would, of our, of some of our commercial parking lots. So we did look at most of the parking lots that are along 58 Highway, just doing a quick drive-through, walk-through inspection, trying to identify what problems are out there. What are we trying to solve? For a few items. One of the particular areas we're having trouble with, as we found, are the actual approaches, the entryway into parking lots. So this is specifically the area where the driveway entrance to a commercial lot meets the city street. That's a specific problem area that we have noticed on several parking lots of the community. We have some concrete lots that have cracks at the joints where they're coming apart. We certainly have a few with potholes, which is a common nuisance. Spalling, creating some of our concrete parking lots, and some ravelling of our asphalt parking lots. It kind of starts with the alligator-cracking surfaces that we're all familiar with, and degrades down to where the asphalt simply is at a point where it's almost dirt. Rock is, you know, rock and dirt is simply the surface of the asphalt is gone. So we saw some conditions like that throughout certain parking lots. And what's most difficult with this particular ordinance is finding that line, that threshold. When does a parking lot go from being a minor nuisance, if you would, where, you know, you have to drive around maybe a particular small area or something, to where it really does become a hazard area? We started the property maintenance code back in 2007. We've had a few instances over the years where we've had to notify property owners to maintain their parking lots. And today, we've had a lot of success with that. Some very good examples of parking lots that have been repaired. Other parking lots, we've had to go back either the next year or two years later with not, maybe not the same area, the same issue, but it's, but the same parking lot surface needs to be constantly monitored and maintained. And I think we're pretty familiar with a few of our shopping center areas where we have that particular issue. Most of the property owners have been very cooperative with us. Though the one thing that we do here, it does, it does take some time to get parking lots repaired. It seems as if most of the ones that we contact get ahold of us right of way, say we're aware of the problem, here's our plan. We want to set up a plan for when you're going to get this fixed. And they have generally done it. Again, a few of our, a few of our centers have had to, they just do minor patch of repair. A few of our centers do some very good repair. So it's just trying to find that, if you would, that fine line as to when does a parking lot need to have repairs? When do we need to contact the property owner to identify what needs to be done? And that's what we were proposing to do with the ordinance language. Maybe spelling out a little bit clearer standards for what constitutes a violation or what condition that we expect parking lots to have or not to have. And so that's our proposal this evening that we would recommend council move forward on is amending the property maintenance code and attempt to see how that would work out.
And as Mr. Catterett indicated, one of the challenges that we have with this compared to normal property maintenance code issues is you are going to, an owner or an ownership group, I don't think that we have had a single contact, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jim. Have we had any contacts that they didn't eventually come into compliance on?
No, everybody has eventually come into compliance.
But it does, it takes longer than, than perhaps staff would like in every single case. And certainly, when the general public is going in there, you know, day after day, especially if they're visiting a particular business all the time, it takes longer to get this. You can imagine Mr. Allen sitting over here, makes the initial phone call, makes the initial contact. They tell him they have a plan in place, and here is the date that it's going to be done by. Just very, very difficult to, you know, if you're talking to somebody on the telephone and you let them know we have this problem in this particular area on a parking lot, that if they come back to Jason and let him know, yeah, we do have a plan, and it's clear to Jason that they're aware that there is a problem there, and here's when the contractor is going to be out. We know that, but the general public sometimes does not. But we know that there's going to be a back end to it. That's kind of where the information flow, we don't know how to get over that hump, if you will.
I have a question. When you talk about private there, one of the worst offenders is there by the post office. You take your car's life in your hands when you go in there. And I stopped in and said something to them about it, and I couldn't tell from their reaction whether the city had said anything to them or not. Because they said, well, it'd probably take a year or two to do something. Well, I don't think that, just because it's a federal agency, I don't think that they should be allowed to get away with hazards for their vehicles and going in there, because there's a lot of traffic in there. So rather than, I don't know what terms that you would use, because we don't think about public. Maybe the word private, governmental, or whatever else that you can, you know, think of. But I think that's a disgrace.
It's obvious that staff has worked really hard on this, and as usual, we appreciate all of your hard work. But I have to say that I feel like the problem that we have here is not a problem with our code. Changing the language in the code is not going to fix this problem. The problem is it takes a long time to fix the parking lot. The problem is oftentimes the people who we contact first aren't the people who have to fix it because it's a corporate-owned thing. So not that I'm necessarily against changing the code, because it makes it more specific. But I think making the code more specific is going to do nothing to change the speed at which our businesses can fix the parking lots. The problem isn't that they misunderstand the code. That's not our problem. So honestly, I see no need to change it. And if anything, maybe sometimes being more specific in the code looks a lot like overregulation.
It's pretty vague, so I don't know what understanding they're going to get from what was, what is being presented here. So I like the wording of this. I like the specificity. So I'm for it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm supportive of this, but I'm kind of on the fence.
I'm supportive of this, but I'm kind of on the fence. I, I'm hearing the arguments from, from both sides, the, the good, the cons, the bad, the good, bad and the ugly, I guess. But I, I see this and I, I look at another situation as city sidewalks. You know, we, we, we have a problem, you know, this here states specifically in section A, one, cracks in concrete or asphalt surfaces causing a vertical offset in excess of one half inch shall be repaired. My, my, my question would be, what constitutes repair? Would that be just a little overlay of, of an inclining piece of, you know, concrete that, that is, is laid there? Or would that mean taking out the, the part that has fallen or heaved and making that, that level at that surface? You know, because I, and I, I don't want to sound like I'm, I'm pointing to a situation that affects me personally, but I, the example that I can give, you know, is in Foxhaven, many of them. You know, when I walk down the sidewalks, you know, I see the sidewalks and those are not the, the property owner's property, it's the city's. But when you walk across where the driveways and the, the sidewalks connect, they're, you know, I've never measured it, but off my memory and my recollection, I, I would bet a good sum of money that many of those do exceed that half inch. So, you know, my, my, my point is, is that unless we as a city are willing to hold ourselves to the same standards and, and pony up to the expense that we're expecting our, our, our businesses to do, you know, I mean, yes, i- if it's a safety hazard and detrimental to somebody getting hurt because of a tripping hazard or something like that, absolutely, I, I, I agree with, with that. But I, I would ask, you know, with keeping safety, welfare and the health of the, the general community in mind, does our current code allow for that protection? You know? That'd be my question.
It, it's certainly a topic that we are going to have to closely look at because as we have more and more sidewalk, as we have aging of the sidewalk, the same with our parking lots, we haven't had a real parking lot maintenance issue yet because most of our parking lots still are, are fairly new. But we're starting to see that each year, we see a little bit more degradation, especially with the concrete lots that were pretty common, you know, ten years ago when, when a lot of our commercial businesses started coming in. It, it certainly is something, it, it is our opinion that having a little more specific standard in here, rather than just being very vague and general with our language does help in when you administer and enforce the ordinance, you have, you, it's more clear what constitutes a violation. It's still subjective, but not as subjective as what our current language is. I think that's the concern that we're, that we're facing, we're trying to get rid of some level of that subjectivity, it's still there, but if you have a little bit better guidelines as to what actually would constitute a violation, it makes it easier to enforce the code.
I'm in agreement that, you know, we need to, as much as possible, remove the vagaries that are in the language. One of the things that I think we have going for us in this community is that we have concerned citizens who are willing to speak about and, and talk about things that affect both their safety and the safety of others. And we also have in this community, business leaders who are very responsible and who are also concerned. But what we don't have is a very good communication tool between them both, and I think that was previously mentioned. And I think as we look at clarifying the language, one of the things we might also want to do is look at a better communications tool where we could link the information that the city may know about when this will be fixed and its status and, and having that available for the public so that they can, they can understand and that their fears and concerns regarding the safety of themselves and others can be put at rest, at least they have a target to look for and, and when those things might be resolved.
First off, I wanted to say that I've said before to staff, I think it's, it's good when we think we have a good document in place for the code, but I think what staff continuously does is try to bring each section in line with the parts that we fixed. And I think this is another part where you've worked on it and made it better. So congratulations for that again. But also, as I read this, I stopped in the packet and I went to Facebook and I, well, first I went to the city website, looked up where the report of concern spot was and I copied and pasted and put it on Facebook and I said, I think sometimes people don't know where to go when they have a concern and it's good to have a, a place to go so you know, you know, where to, where to go and do that. And I felt like that I didn't know where that was right away, but I found it quickly and I thought that's good information for people to have. But I'm fully in support of this.
Mr. Stevens?
If I could dovetail it, that, that report of concern thing, if you haven't been on it for a while, you can't get back in it, you just, you have to go back and reestablish your identity, which is kind of annoying really. I don't know if that's something we can do something about or not.
I'm in support of this as well. Mr. Catterett's done a lot of work on this and improved this a great deal. I like a little more specificity. I, I do acknowledge though, the, the, the concern about enforceability and that I don't think a lot of property owners are going to do a lot about this. I don't think this is going to accelerate a great deal, but at the same time, if we don't put anything in there, you know, before I came on the council, I had the opportunity to sit down with one of the property owners that's actually in our photographs and the gentleman had looked at me and said, well, you guys don't have anything in the code that's going to make me do it, so I'm not going to do it. If, you know, and, you know, I, and again, this is before I was even on the council. So, I mean, you know, the only response I had was, hey, I'm not going to shop in your business if you don't care about your parking lot, you clearly don't care about my patronage. But, yeah, I mean, but the statement to me was, they, he, he was wanting this, he was daring us to do this. And the concern is, I don't think this is going to dramatically affect any good property owner in the city because they're already doing what they need to do, because they value the customers, they value the community and their relationships with their fellow businesses, their neighbors and, and their customers. On the other hand, without this, we're running very vague, we're running blind and people are daring us. So, I mean, it may not have a large enforceability, but it's, it's a better, better situation from where we're at.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The comment I'm going to make is that, and you just brought it out to me, thank you, because I was thinking about this as I was looking at these pictures during, in the packet and online when I was researching this. The one thing that bothers me, and I wish Mr. Holman was here, and I'm not throwing rocks at him, but he, he and I have spoken about this before, is that some, not some of them, but the main pictures that are drawn to our attention here, and I'm not going to say where it's at, I'm not going to say the shopping center, I, you know, I, no need for that. But when people, citizens use a parking lot as a shortcut to go do their breakfast or coffee or whatever, you know, they're driving through a parking lot. It's been said tonight, you know, during another agenda item that we discussed, you know, and I'm not, I'm paraphrasing, Mike, but you know, when you have parking lot contractors trying to develop, trying to build streets, they're not, it, 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 two different birds and, and they're trying to do two different, very different things under certain, different circumstances. But what I see in these pictures is where I know where it's at, I've, I've been through it many times myself, yeah. I've had my car damaged by it, but I don't think it's because of the parking lot being built or designed improperly, it was built and designed as a parking lot, but it's been used over the whole time that I've lived here since 2002 as a cut through. You know, I remember, and I usually don't do this, but I, I, I will paraphrase a conversation that, that Mr. Holman and I have had over the, over the many years, even back as far as when I was serving in the P and Z with him, that we have both taken comments, you know, that worried about, are you, are you going to shut down, are you going to block off the entrances to such and such because then we won't be able to go get our coffee? Then we'll have to go down to 58 to go around, we'll have to do, you know, it's a parking lot. Yes, it's convenient and yes, it, it may save time, but the fact of the matter is, these parking lots, I'm being an advocate for, for the property owners, and I, I kind of blame them too, in, in a way, because they're the ones that designed it and built it, but it's set up for that, the, the improper use, the improper use. And, and I, I can't help but think that that's what a major factor of the degradation of those, of those lots are. You know, it's, I really don't feel that it, you know, that these parking lots had the problems that we had out here in City Hall where we had to pull up the, the asphalt and put in six inches of concrete because the brakes were making the divots. You don't, you can go over to those parking lots and, and, and park in those spots without that problem, but you drive through those places that look like a thoroughfare, you're going to get that living tar beaten out of any car that you drive. So, you know, I, I, I'm going to call a bird a bird, you know? I, I, I just have a, a difficult time and I, I understand why that, that business owner's saying, do it, go ahead, do it, you know, because it's, the other thing that, that I'll say now that comes to my mind is, I find it very interesting, very interesting, you know, and personally, I, I appreciate anytime anybody tries to seek out information or, or input from people, but I, Facebook isn't the place I'm going to look. They're, they're going to call me. But, you know, I do give those phone numbers of staff and to Jim Catterett of, you know, this is the person you need to talk to. I even give it out, Jim, Jason's cards, you know, I carry his cards in my, in my billfold. Yeah, that's why you get calls, Jason.
You've been wondering for your cards.
Why is he, why is he getting so many requests? But I, I find it really interesting that, and I, I have no reason to disbelief staff, but since they've put this on, how, how long's it been, the information out there, who to call on our website? I'm going to ask that question. As far as the report of concern is. Yes. Four months? Yeah, for potholes, about four months. About four months and staff has gotten one, one, one concern called out of it. You know, that's the point I want to make, you know, one concern out of, out of four months. And like I say, I, I mean, we can sit here and, and give this all the due diligence and, and spend a lot of time on it, but I, I, I don't see it rising to the level of some of the things that, that we really need to be doing.
Councilmember Huback?
When I read our old one, if I read it correctly, it just says we have to keep it in a proper state of, of repair. Well, that could be the eye of the beholder, but what you've got on the new one here, you specifically say one inch, an inch and a half, two inches or whatever it is, and so everybody can tell then, and I like that being more specific, that is too, the other one is too general. You just, you didn't know whether you were in compliance or not.
Any comments, questions?
Mr. Mayor, I also have something I wanted to say along with it, I don't know if I'm out of order or not, but when we're talking about the parking lots, we also should be talking about the maintenance of undeveloped commercial property itself. Does that come under this or do you want that to come under other?
Undeveloped commercial property?
We've got, for instance, on Madison Street, there is 60 acres there owned by a bank and it's just all grown up in weeds and trash and everything and it's commercial, as I understand, it is zoned commercial, but nobody requires them to keep it mowed or to keep the sprouts from growing up or anything else. So does that come under this kind of maintenance, maintenance of the property as well as this parking lot, or does that need to come under other?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Catterett had actually come to me a couple of weeks ago on this very issue relative to some of those properties that are on west side of east side, I'm sorry, east side over there on Madison in the curve. Staff is actually kind of looking at that as an issue because they're, those, those properties are definitely owned by absentee banks. It takes considerably longer on those properties, sometimes than even the parking lots, to get a reaction out of them in the summer and to get those properties cleaned up. So it was actually our intention to, once we got this one through the table, to go ahead and start looking at that as well.
All right, any other, any other questions or statements? And that's the last item, other than other. I don't think we have any others. We do have an executive session item.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I had something that I, I wanted to bring up and that has to do with the council meeting on April the 13th. I would like to see our reception held before the meeting starts because it's not a part of our business program and it bothers me, it's just me, but it bothers me when we break in the middle of a works, of a business meeting to go party for about 30 minutes. Let's do, it's nothing that says we have to do it in the middle of our meetings, let's do it at the very beginning. I think it's more professional and the people can come and go a little bit easier. I would like to see that as an option. Also, I am still, as you all know, feel very strongly about calling a special meeting a regular meeting and a regular meeting a special meeting. To me, that is deceitful. It may be legal, but I don't think it is moral or I don't think it is ethical by my standards and I don't know whether the rest of you agree or not. But I would like for us to consider and talk about what we can do to make one meeting rather than two. And that is, I don't know whether you want to discuss it tonight or whether you'd want to do it some other time or what, but I would like to have your thoughts on it because it's really something that bothers me.
The floor is open for discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Please go ahead.
On, on the points that Ms. Huback has made, I'll be very brief on this. I, I actually concur with her on the issue of the social. I think, you know, I've had instances now where I've gotten to see numerous council members join the council and we take that break. There are people that show up with the expectation of seeing city business and then to show up and 10 minutes later, there's a 30 minute break. It, it is a little disjunct and so I, I think it's a very small price to pay that we move the social aspect either at six o'clock or after the meeting so we can go ahead and take care of city affairs.
Other comments?
I disagree. I think that, I mean, not that it's always great to do it the way it's always been done, but I believe that this has been discussed over and over and over and over and over again and we've always come to the same conclusion. I think that as, I think having the reception after the new council members are sworn in is a way to honor them. It's also a great way to honor council members who are leaving the council. To do that prior to the meeting doesn't make much sense to me. I think it's very clear in the agendas that are put out for the meeting that night, what's going to happen, that we're going to have this part of the meeting and then we're going to adjourn and then we're going to have a reception so that people who look at the agenda before they get here are able to plan ahead for that.
Councilmember Stevens?
You know, it's been kind of a tradition, it's only once a year, so I don't really see it as a problem either.
Other comments?
I guess I have trouble figuring out why it's different to do it a half an hour after the meeting starts rather than a half an hour before the meeting starts. You know, what we do is, we require the staff then to do the cleanup afterwards, let them do the cleanup at the fore and earlier, and so they shouldn't have to stay at the end of our meeting for that, you know? Common sense should prevail.
Any other comments?
The comment I'll have, you know, and, and this is the, the kind of summarizing what I, what I said in the email, is that, and Joe's here tonight, thank you for being here, because I have a feeling that you might be called up here. Um, we, we, we've discussed this, I, I, I'm not, I'm not going to say enough because it seems like it's never enough, but we've discussed this many times since I've been on the council, and that, that's six years now. And the thing that I keep falling back to is the legality, you know? And with all due respect, Ms. Huback, is that I, 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 I keep hearing the, the same argument that what we're doing is improper and immoral, unethical, and that. And I have to go back to what's legal. Is this legal? And, and the person, the only person that I can ask is our legal attorney, and I've asked him that time and time again, is what we're doing legal? And, and the, the, the answer always comes back, and that's why I forwarded his email that I got from him, that all the council got from him last year, because I suspect his answer's not going to change unless there's been legislative changes, and I have not heard of any. And until that opinion, until I get a different legal opinion from, from staff, I'm not, I don't think that what I'm doing is, is breaking the law, okay? Uh, I, I, I fail to see where it's being, you know, that I'm being part of a deception because the agendas come out on Thursday, just like every other meeting, every meeting we have. The only time an, an agenda don't come out is if we as a council call for a special meeting. Three of us come together and say, "We need to have a special meeting," and we don't have the time for that agenda to be posted. The, our, our practices and, and, and everything we do is that our agendas are posted Thursday before the meeting, and special meetings, uh, executive meetings, uh, all of that, well ahead of time. So, you know, I, I, I just don't see how what I'm supportive of and, and what I've been supportive of for six years is deceptive or unethical, you know? And that, that's, that's for me, but I do respect what you're saying, and I, I keep trying to, to see where I, I can, I, I can reconcile that and, and, and come to a, a compromise or, or come a little closer to your side of the fence to see where you're coming from, because I, I just can't see it. You know, I, I always got to fall back and ask Joe, "Is what I'm doing as a council member legal?" And that answer is consistently and constantly always been yes.
One of the things is, here in Missouri, I think the attorney generals, several of them have said, that in Missouri, we use the common, ordinary, uh, description of a word, and a description of a word special is not the same as our regular. And yet, we are using it that way, and that really troubles me when we use it as a means to get around something that we don't, uh, want to do. A regular meeting is one that has every single item that we're going to conduct on a regular meeting, and that includes whether you do an election, whether you do a, uh, old unfinished business, whether you do new business, or whatever it is. We just, we can do it all in one meeting. We do not have to have two meetings. It simplifies, there's about five or six different ways in which we can do an election. But this one is the simplest. The one that I suggested is, if you look at your, um, your agenda, like we had last week, and where you have the call to order, the roll call, the pledge of allegiance, and the presentations and awards, after a roll call and before you do the pledge, have the election. And let the people then go and take their seats, because once what you have the election, is they give the oath of office, and I believe she says, "And they will take, take your seat." And she, once they take her, their seat, then you're ready to conduct the rest of your business. Have a roll call to make sure that you've got all the new members on there, because some of them may not show up that night, that may have other... We've had times when we haven't had everybody that was elected be installed at the same night. And then you go on with your pledge of allegiance, your presentations, your personal appearances, your staff reports, your committee reports, your consent agenda, your, your unfinished business, and your new business, and the meeting is over. It is simple, it is easy to understand, and it doesn't create any problems at all. It's not that so much that what we're doing is illegal as it is. It's not necessary. We can do it simpler and easier and get the same results. We can do it with one meeting. I don't know, I've never asked the city adminis- manager, do we pay some of our people twice because for attending some of these meetings? For instance, uh, some of them are not, um, considered management, they're considered, um, uh, craft personnel, and we have to pay them overtime when they come. So, do they have to, do they get paid for two meetings, or do they get paid for one? How does that go?
I don't think that there would be anyone at the meeting that, that would be being paid double or overtime.
Okay.
Sonia?
Ms. Huback, do you have any new information? This has been discussed over and over and over again, and I feel like if you want to have this conversation again, maybe if you and Mr. Burke get together, he hasn't heard all your arguments, but the rest of us have. I don't feel like we need to discuss this tonight.
And I, I agree with that, but may I ask that I, I, I have a, a comment that I have not made. Would it, would it be okay? Would it be okay?
Yes, Kevin, go ahead and make your comment.
Okay. To, Ms. Ms. Huback, I don't have that ordinance laying in front of me, but I did pull that up in my email. I, I forwarded it to the whole council. I forwarded it to Joe, Jim, and Jeannie, and it has the original, uh, ordinance that was passed by the council at that time, and I, I, I remember Mrs. Judy being on the council, Mr. Venk being on the council, and Mr. Heim being on the council, uh, but I don't remember... Mr. Holsman may have been on the council. Uh, there were several, but anyway, they're the ones that, that passed that. And I, I've tried to figure out, and I haven't asked this question of staff, but I, I, I think after reading that, where the term "special meeting" came from, and that's the only place I've ever seen it, is in that ordinance that was passed back on that date, it speaks of a special meeting. So, I, I have to assume that's where that came from, you know?
The, the terminology for the special meeting was backed into, very, very briefly, 1999, the ordinance was passed by 9047 that established the two-meeting format that we are following to this day. In 2008, when the charter amendments were placed forward, there was an amendment placed on that said that this would take place at the next regular meeting of the council. That was not in conflict with 99047 because 99047 established that at the next regular meeting of the city council, that the new council members would be seated. The problem was then, do we go to, to, to have the second meeting after the break, there had to be declared a special meeting. There's nothing wrong with the way we're doing it. As the council member indicated, there are five or six, there are probably twenty different ways that it could be done. This is just through time how this was developed and what came to be. And it's a question of interpretation as to whether or not you think it is the appropriate way or the inappropriate way, and the council has heard this many, many times. Um, right now, you have the two-meeting format in place. Could you go to the one-meeting format? Yes, but right now, what you're doing is, is lethal.
Mr. Morehead?
Actually, when I would, uh, wanted to address this topic that Ms. Huback brought up, I was talking about cake. Um, first of all, which is actually that issue of when we break, that is not a part of the charter, therefore, there is no repeat discussion on this. That is a custom that we can choose at any time. Now, it is not immoral, it is not illegal, although cake can be fattening. But no, I, just, sorry, I had to make that joke. Um, I thought we were just talking about the cake portion. I don't know why we strayed back into an argument that none of us has wanted to have, but I, I thought the only topic was whether we were going to break or not, and I'm not that passionate about it either way. But I wanted to at least give Ms. Huback a chance to pose that topic.
Any other comments? We'll keep the, uh, meeting format that we currently use. We have an executive session item, roll call vote to enter into executive session. Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Sonia?
Yes.
Mr. Hub, and Ms. Huback? Kevin?
Yes.
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 And we're, uh, we're going to go into executive session, discuss real estate acquisition matters.